Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three city council meeting. If there's anyone in the audience like to have fine headphones, please raise your hand, and I don't see anybody that would need those, so I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, Donna, can you do a roll call, please?
I will. Councilmember Boden.
Here.
Councilmember Sherman.
Yeah.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
Marinasco.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember McDowell.
Present.
And Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome.
Does the council have any late changes to the agenda? City manager? All right. Does the council have any board reports to share? All right. Has everyone reviewed the items in the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as published?
So moved.
Second. All right. We have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda published. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post motion carries. All right, we'll move right into presentations. Finance Director Mike Givens.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. Tonight, we're taking a look at the financial report through February, and in essence, I'm going to focus on the general fund, but contained in the report that was in your packet is a summary of all of the funds. So I'll pull my glasses. It's a bigger screen, but not big enough. Okay, so when we adopted the twenty twenty-three budget, it was adopted using the ending fund balance. So as you look at the very top of this presentation, the twenty twenty-three budget, we budgeted estimating revenues of just over fourteen point four million dollars and expenditures of fifteen point nine. So just if we stop and think about that for a second, that's expenses over revenue by a million and a half dollars. So we knew that going into the fiscal year, we had a beginning fund balance of just over five million dollars. And so with that projection, we were estimating that we would end the year at just slightly over three and a half million dollars, which would keep us two percent over our target of twenty percent of budgeted expenditures. As you know, part of that decision was based on increasing our ability to jail, to use jail services. But as the fiscal year has gone along, our current projections, if we make no changes whatsoever, and I want to assure you, I'm not being overly conservative in this, but we're estimating, and now I'm in the column, twenty twenty-three through February and the estimate, we're estimating a slight decrease in our revenue at just over fourteen point one million. And some of that reduction is we're projecting just slightly less in sales tax. As I mentioned last month, we know that B and O tax will be down about two hundred thousand dollars. And then the other areas, a fairly decent reduction in fines and penalties that we don't see increasing necessarily over the course of the year. So the total reduction in revenue is just over three hundred thousand dollars. And with all of the figures I'm giving you tonight, I'm assuming that the economy stays exactly where it has for first quarter. If there's any kind of a downturn, I'm not estimating anything in relation to that. So I think that is another reason why we want to make sure that that ending fund balance is at our target of twenty percent at least going into twenty twenty-four. On the expenditure side, you'll notice that for our estimate through February, that's increased slightly. And the difference between revenue and expenditures, I, this is a part I really want to point out clearly is now we're at an estimate of just over one point nine million dollars where our expenses are exceeding our revenue. Again, that's not taking into account a heavy use of our jail services. We're basing that kind of at where it is right now, which is our police chief and captain are telling us in a meeting just this morning that they're comfortable with where they're at, but we don't know where that's going to take us through the course of the year, but they feel comfortable that they're able to jail. I guess we can say the bad, the, the people that need to be jailed are being jailed, but it's not at an, at an excess of where maybe we thought it would be when we entered into the budget adoption in November. But if that goes slightly more, which none of us can control, then that would be a little worse, but I'm trying to estimate it at kind of where our trend has been so far. And I'll be honest, I have a little bit of grace here because I can look at March also because we're preparing this for February, but we can kind of see where we're headed. Along the lines of revenue also, we're estimating that we realize our full budget on property taxes, which we should or close to it. There's no reason to think we wouldn't. But with all of those things in line, we know that some expenses have increased and they've increased dramatically. One of those is our liability insurance, and that increase came after the budget was adopted. The, our contract for fire and emergency medical service with Central Mason Fire, that's an agreed upon formula. It relies on a calculation using assessed valuation of property within the city limits that the county assessor provides, that total assessed valuation, just like the city property tax levy is divided by a thousand, and then that fire levy rate is applied. I budgeted a forty percent increase because we knew property values were increasing and that would go up. It went up more than that forty percent I budgeted by an additional three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. So all of these things along with just our expenses, our personnel costs are are heading us towards an issue if we don't do something. You know, in twenty twenty-three, our revenue exceeding our expenses by that much is, it's, it's a concern that I took to our city manager and have recommended that we start to make some reductions now so that we're being good stewards of the funds and that we don't have to take such harsh cuts when twenty twenty-four comes along. In conjunction with this, as you know, the Financial Sustainability Task Force is meeting. In our last meeting, I shared with them the approach we were taking because they're doing important work. They've heard from all departments on what the departments provide. They've looked at revenue options. We're now down to making a formal recommendation and proposal to the city manager for what we can do, but they've come to that realization that I think you know, we as city leadership know that there's just only so many sources of revenue that we have that quite frankly, our public can even tolerate to increase, and we've got to live within our needs. And so what we're, what I shared with them is we're looking at our current expenses to see where we can take some steps to curb some costs without dramatically affecting city services. They were comfortable with that and in fact have reiterated that they would expect that we would do that and not just keep our foot on the gas until we hit the end of twenty-three and then have to make large cuts. So they know that's coming. We've met, started meeting with department directors and others to start to kind of talk about where we can slow some expenses this year to be prudent about that so that we can try to bring that in line a bit more so that, I mean, as you can see, if we go with you know, a pretty realistic projection, you'll notice that, and I'm looking under the twenty twenty-three estimated actual, if that continues, now we're under the twenty percent. And that means we're having to pay that back on top of having to make these reductions. And, and again, I, I don't have a crystal ball or, and I'm certainly not projecting that the economy is going to necessarily do anything bad, but if it does, that's our backstop in that case. And that's what you wisely set as as a, a limit for us as a city. So we have something to fall back on, not only in those times, but if we have an unexpected expenditure. So we want to be in a position where we're not having to make draconian cuts, but can really look at this wisely with, we're trying to take this methodically, we'll be, we've spent time individually with department heads, and now the plan is that they can go back and take another look at their budgets. And on May third, we're going to come together as city leadership and really together so that we're not doing this individually, but talk about where can we get some maybe economy of scale, collaboration, if we're going to look at positions that maybe could be combined or that sort of thing. Because there's just a limited amount of places we can go to carve out one point nine million dollars in this budget. There's just not much leeway and we're not, I think something that's been a theme with the Financial Sustainability Task Force is we're a pretty lean organization as far as how many FTE we have. So that being said, this isn't an easy task. It hasn't been easy in any way when you're having to make some sort of reduction, but I don't think it serves our citizens well. And certainly the city as a whole, if we just continue in this kind of a pattern without stepping back and taking a look at this year and where we can start to make some reductions and then build the budget for twenty twenty-four in a sensible manner that really operates within the revenues we expect, you know, really matching up those expenditures and not shooting beyond that so much that we're operating with our ending fund balance for ongoing kinds of expenses. So that's really the state of the general fund to assure you that we're very seriously taking a look at that to bring it in line so that it is not such a shock when we go to develop the twenty twenty-four budget. I don't by any means want to present this as it's going to be easy because anytime you have to cut back on a budget, there's a loss. That's, you know, I mean, as well as anyone, but if, you know, a lot of times I think we're accused in government of not operating like a business. And if you had a business where your expenses were that much over your income, you'd make some cuts. And that's where we're really having to, to do this. We're, we're just above our, our revenue and we have to take a look at this sooner rather than later. As far as the financial report on the rest of the funds, everything's pretty much in line where you would expect it to be. We're not seeing that kind of, I, I don't want to by any means say that the other funds are no problem. We give careful focus on all of them, on what we're doing, particularly Public Works as they're developing their budget. But as you can see, the ending fund balance on all of our funds doesn't end anywhere extremely high. So we're doing the projects we need to do, but we don't have an excess anywhere. We're working really hard right now on the finance side to gather quite a bit of documentation to send to the FCS group for the rate study on some of the background they need so that they have that information. But otherwise, that's, I'm gonna end the financial report there.
Mike, if you don't mind, I'll add any, any impacts to services and community or consideration of this budget process. So we are weighing that internally. We will weigh that heavily on how that affects our community and services that we provide in any decisions that are presented in the supplemental budget to the council in June. So make sure that the community and the council are aware of that, that, that utmost and foremost, that the services we provide to council will be a consideration when we make some of these reduction recommendations.
Thank you.
I just wanted to ask at the thirty-one twenty-three zero six eight, is that with the authorized extra million dollars that we used out of the reserves? Or is that, I thought you, maybe you said that we've kind of adjusted that down?
Well, I adjusted the estimate of how much I think we're going to spend on jail services, but it's still substantially higher than we had budgeted or spent in the twenty twenty-two budget. We had, I just wanted to more reasonably give you what we think we'll spend without going, because we can, we can kind of see where we're landing on monthly jail costs now, albeit it's only three months into the year. So that's why I qualified that a bit. That could change, and we come back in a couple of months on a financial report and say this is increased somewhat, but the costs for the negotiated contracts with both, both Miss Quale and Mason County are considerably more favorable. And quite frankly, the staff, staffing level we have in police, they just don't have the extra staff to be doing a lot more. So, but they assured us this morning, they're locking up more people than they were able to. So.
Yeah, because we were spending two hundred and forty thousand dollars a year locally for the beds that we had here. Yeah.
In order to alleviate the try to go in order, fine, thank you. Couple of quick things. We're not contractually obligated to spend the money on jail, correct? We're not obligated. Okay, so that's a known fact. And then the next thing, I would like the council to be a little bit more involved when we're talking about service reductions. I appreciate staff making some recommendations, but I would like us to be ultimately kind of the final call on that.
I'd like to go on the offense. I think we should hire grant writers or something so that we can bring in more revenue and you know, you need money to make money. We need some capital. I think we could alleviate some of the shortfalls by bringing in money in different areas and then spreading out the cost. So I think that we invested in some grant writing and we can take some pressure off our overworked folks already so that they could do their job because we're going to have staff cuts. So if we're going to ask them to go look for money too, you know, we couldn't because they don't have time because they're doing other things with their staff time. So I think we really need to think about playing offense and getting grant writers to bring more money in and not just playing defense all the time. And I'd like to know what the rest of the council thought about that.
I think we've been very successful with grants, with, with staff.
Well, I think strategically, absolutely, those, those are opportunities that we would look at in formulating the twenty twenty-four budget and those expenditures at that point, I think addressing the shortfall that we're seeing now in the timeframe that we're working with in order to make a reasonable dent in this is, is fairly immediate. You know, you're talking mid-year, you're talking June, July, you know, July one at the latest. So we're talking about these, these implementing some of these corrections over the next two months. We certainly have the need and the want for grant writing and, but we also have to weigh how that works with our current workload, current staff, and it really doesn't affect operations. Those are typically capital projects. So we have to weigh how that, how we can implement those grants when they, when they come out. There are some opportunities that we're talking about in the community, maybe some partnership opportunities for grant writing. So we'll have some more information for you.
Right. I'd like to stop cutting after we cut.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying. So we should, we should think about really seriously considering twenty twenty-four adding staff that brings in money.
Yeah. We will present a balanced budget to the council entering in twenty twenty-four. That's our obligation, our obligation to approve a balanced budget. And if those expenditures have a revenue stream that offset those, we certainly can consider those at that point, but I think we're not at the point of prospecting. Right? That's not, I don't think that's prudent governmental budgeting. We need to ensure that we have revenue to offset those expenditures, but we will have options for the council.
And the task force has actually thrown around that idea and some others and, you know, as they've talked about recommendations, and I don't want to steal their thunder, but you know, weighing things such as contracting out as opposed to having staff and those kinds of things to really make a solid recommendation to the city manager to bring to you on where they could, because they saw this, you know, as well, this expense, our expenses are exceeding where our revenue is, and it's not just about what can we do to bring in more money, but how can we also better spend how, how we budget? And they certainly looked at that too and mentioned a grant writer.
From the Financial State Sustainability Task Force perspective, so they're, they're actually looking at the overall problem, not just this year's problem, right? So they're, they've been looking at, but we've been looking at since twenty eighteen. The two thousand twenty-five miracle cliff, right? So next year is actually really the year when we're going to feel the most pain we've ever felt in kind of recently.
Correct. We have now seen the twenty twenty-five.
This is the compounding effect of under collecting in GFCs, under collecting and other things that are because when you get into it, so you're answering your question, when we talk about grants, grants are good for capital allowances, grants are good for programs, grants are not good for operational dollars. That's what we're talking about in general fund. This is the operations side of the house. And, you know, cutting positions or, you know, not refilling positions, we're just continuing to plug the hole and not actually fix the leak. So, I mean, I'm interested in the solution here. So whatever we can get in a laughing solution would be great.
Any other questions for Mike? All right. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
We now have a presentation from Municipal Court Judge Stephen Greer.
Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council, nice to address you. I usually watch you every week. This is the first report from the city courts and the council in person since two thousand nineteen because of COVID. And I tried to make a broad overview of the presentation tonight. Got to get a flavor of what the other branch of government's up to. And so in this report, and Max, I want me to sign me when the changer, okay, I'll put a page in. There's a lot to it, but it'll go pretty quick. A lot of it is photos of what's being done by the community service. I wanted you to know about that. So in our introduction, it is, is available online. Write our mission statement and vision statement. Unlike some mission and vision statements, these are well thought out and revised over the years. And it points out the importance of the fact that we are a separate branch of government, that we have a legal obligation that controls what we do and how we deal with people. And one of the things to point out is some of the things we do are popular and some of the things we do are not popular because we have to follow rules and sometimes people don't like the rules we follow. Another part of our business statement though, is the education of the staff. Second paragraph in the bottom, where we can't do well for the city and the public if we're not well educated up on what's current in our field. And so we strive very hard to keep it that way. And the state court system gives us a lot of opportunities from their funds, since we're talking about money tonight, from their funds to train the staff as opposed to city funds. The last one is a bit unique to our court. You don't see it most court's vision statements, and that's the fact we recognize that everybody that walks in this door is different. And we have to be treated as individual. We have a large variety of people that come in this courtroom. I would invite people to come watch court. I think at least three of you have, they're sitting before me today. We operate in four to five languages a month. We have ninety-five percent of the people that come in this door are below the poverty level. We have crime victims that come from this store. We have those crime victims are businesses and individuals. We have people that come to the store mentally ill, homeless and also wealthy. They all come to the store and they all have to be treated fairly and equally before this court. There's no exception allowed. So generally speaking, what do we do? And this is just a brief summary. Ghost misdemeanors are things like DUIs, assault for domestic violence, assault for, you know, the bar fight. Misdemeanors are things like criminal trespass, which is very common crime here, dirty beat thefts, the ghost misdemeanor, trafficking fractions. I'll be honest, we don't get too many of those right now. We have one officer that bites a lot of them and the rest do not. Out control violations come and go in waves. Health violations, the same way, and other secret violations as well that come and go in waves. We're expecting, I will kind of reactionary, the court can't do anything until it comes to us. That decision's made by the executive branch of government. So what comes to us, we have no control over that. Our job is to deal with what shows up. There's some examples that we do, and it's not exclusive. Obviously, like other people in the city, we work with the public at this front counter here all the time and also in the courtroom. We have inquiries, made various ways to the computer, email, in person. The staff has to arrange calendars every day. Like today, we have Spanish and English for court. Tomorrow we'll have, I think, three languages going on in court, if not four. They have to make entries into state computer system of everything we do. Absolutely everything without any exception. It takes a lot of their time. Not only do I want to point out, and we only do duties for additional branch of government, we also help out the executive branch as well. And that's why I threw that in there. Jerry Taylor, county supervisor, does a lot of fingerprinting for the police department, not fingerprinted at the jail. That's against the wall behind you. There's an ink pad. We do that for the, for the police because state patrol wants it for the federal government. We also have a court administrator who's sitting behind me and she reviews the jail bill to make sure it's accurate, the medical bills and make sure we're charged correctly. And she saves the city thousands of dollars every year by making those screenings. We have a staff that's very well trained, a legal clerk that's an expert in collections because we don't want to piss off a federal court by collecting money from someone we can't collect money from. So there's a lot of things we've got to think about. The next slide here before it gets to some more fun pictures for you. There's some highlights, there was some talking of grants. We did get MOC, Sancer, Ministry of Office, the courts. And that's run by the state Supreme Court. They gave us a hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars in some odd cents that we started using for every first of last year. The front of the treatment court meets here every Wednesday at one thirty. That court so far has had a maximum eighteen people in it, a minimum right now we're at a low of about twelve. We graduated nine people with this program. This program combines the Concess of Mental Health Court was commonly known as the drug court and also community court. And you should always take from places that are doing well. So the Visualized Treatment Court is a name that we stole, for lack of better words, from Kitsap County Juvenile Apartment. That was nice enough to send all the material to us unlocked so we could use it. And we took that juvenile court program, which combined mental health and drug court, and moved it up to an adult court level based on research. And then combined it with a community court and the longest running community court in the state of Washington, City Olympia. And so Judge Al was a great help as well. With this program, we are the time people graduate, the average is clean and sober for about four hundred some days. Just so you know who's in the program, a young man who crashed a car drunk under age twenty-one was one of our first graduates. He then went out by the sewer plant and vomited all over the place and passed out. Law enforcement had him in a backup patrol car where he continued the activity of vomiting. So think about the police officers and what they have to do. And he was one of our first graduates. He stayed clean and sober for over a year. He got a job and is doing very well. He's just one example of the people that come to the court. A number of people that come to this court, do not speak English, are immigrants, usually who have work visas. Many of them have gotten licenses, jobs. Some are studying English in the second language. And they're making great progress instead of being on the road and talking. And they're making uh great progress instead of being on the road intoxicated like they were, most of them. Or stealing or passing out drunk in your business doorway. They come here every single week and have to be clean, sober. Tell us what they're doing, how they're doing. And what their plans are for their future. And another of you have come through graduations and it's greatly appreciated and it means a lot to them. And statistically, every graduate so far, we haven't had that many, uh, have not reappeared in any way. So that's that's the goal, our goal is to never see them again. And with the permission of this. Same manager, I could pass this down the road. As an example of what one of the graduates are required to explain where they were. And. When this started and where they ended up. When it was over, uh, what changed happened in their life. And while that's being passed on as a project when we're graduates who want to explain in part how we did as opposed to telling us how we did. I'll jump ahead. We, the courts managed to grab on some grants over the years or last couple of years. So again, the true court grant that came from the state court system. The state did contact all the courts this year and they have some more grant money. And I must admit, when I sell grant money, I go after it if I can, it's gonna help the city. So we did grab twenty-five thousand five hundred from the state court system, which went straight to the general fund of the city to help recoup the cost of the past year. Uh, the screen on the wall uh came from a court grant. And this is first use for city councils tonight. And that was paid for a hundred percent by the state of Washington through a grant program. Uh, the pending grants, I wrote this, has changed a little bit. We're looking at uh what's happening in Olympia right now, and it does look like we're in line to renew our chief of court grants. And that's a dollar estimate based on our first grant. The security scanner is called on on space. Uh, we were gonna get that for free from the Temple Justice Olympia that's going through a remodel, uh, but the. Gift was not really gonna be a gift, it was more of a burden, uh, strong model, it's wrong type, we can't service it and could have radiation link. So we said no, uh, but there is some legislation to keep an eye on that might give us a ninety percent match on security equipments. I have a private foundation that might give us a ten percent. So I've not given up and that might still happen, so. We don't give up in the court, we just keep fighting, so. Next, I want to talk about community service and things will pick up pace here a little bit. You talked about the jail cost. Uh, community service is an alternative to jail, and so that's help keep your jail costs down and give back to the community. This is evidence based and mostly evidence comes from either California. Uh, a midwestern state where retired police officers did some research, of all places, Switzerland. Who, they apparently had the ability to say, you're doing community service, you're going to jail and then look at the results going into the future. We can't do that American system of justice arbitrary decide who gets what punishment. Apparently in Switzerland they can't, um, so. Statistically, uh, picking one ratio. Will make most people show up for community service. And so. If a prosecutor wants a couple of days in jail. And. Instead, we make them a couple of days of community service. I write it up as Lua thirty days jail. So they do not do the community service to go to jail for three days. Thank you for the new contract. Cause he used to play poker a lot, did a lot of lust. But now I can put him in jail. And the word is out that she will go to jail. That has a good effect, uh, because it's taken some time, but people are learning they will go to jail. Because of that, Miss Ted's uh appearance rate for people doing community services is starting to increase. And so that's a good thing. And so it's a win-win, cause jails costing a hundred and thirty dollars a day. And with community service, uh, for example, six hours has a two hundred and fifty-one dollar eighty-four percent value at minimum wage. As opposed to if they go to jail for those thirty days, it's three thousand nine hundred dollars to the city. And so obviously we favor community service. What do they do? So a lot of things. Uh, so small examples, uh, these are some flower beds of the city that were uh. Full of weeds is partially done here by a defendant. Next is after they were completed, I'm gonna roll through this pretty quick, if I recognize this sidewalk, it's by a pine tree. Lot of stuff growing between uh the cement, uh, see some is starting to come back again. Uh, but this is a criminal defendant on the ground. Scraping up. West in the sidewalk and what it looked like when he was dead. Uh, next. There's a library uh here in town. And a lot of the reading of that library uh is done by the community service workers. And as example, before and after by their signar and this one part of what they did that day at the library. Uh, rolling forward, and to be honest, I forgot to ask where the sidewalk was, so maybe some of you recognize it, and I don't. This is one sidewalk in town, it's kind of overgrown by grass and lichen and other things, and they cleaned it up in the next photo. And we really believe that the nicer it looks, I think some people here in the audience agree, the better it is. And so this is one of the things they do. Next, uh, this is their evidence yard, uh, we forward work crew got to it. And then after work crew got to it, you actually find the trailers he is, they're getting covered up by weeds. You know, all these little things add up. Next. And I have a little twist on this one for you, there's actually Shelton Creek is inside there. You just can't see it right now. We get a permit once a year from the state. Uh, to. I clean out Shelton Creek, it has to be done at the right time because of the fish. And the environment, so. Is a state permit and it's all done based on state rules. So in the next photo. You see the work being done. In the foreground is a criminal defendant, and I tried to take pictures where you couldn't see who they were. Who's down in there, uh, with his fishing gaiters, uh, clean out the creek. In the background is your, I guess, twist for today. Unknown to the criminal defendants, in the background there is your criminal prosecutor. Uh, Tammy Shoppell. She decided if she was to have me sentence people to community service, she should see what it's like. And so she put on a hat, blue jeans and a shirt. Didn't tell anybody who she was, they thought she was another criminal defendant and she went in there and helped clean out the street. And so kudos to prosecutor you picked. Uh, she decided other people had to do it, she wanted to know what it was like, and so she did it herself for a full day. Next is a picture of when they're all done, most stuff they took out of there. Uh, next, you're bored just cleaning up the streets, um. The food bank moved one building to another and then a lot of stuff to move. Here in town. And so the work crew increased service, helped the food bank uh move their supplies from one building to another. Uh, next code enforcement, I had this truck and it needed to be taken away, but it would take the truck with what was in it. And so again, can you sort of step that? Take out the back and then uh this is garbage on the inside, obviously somebody living in there at one time. That was all taken away and then when I piled the ground and everything bagged up. After that was done, then code enforcement could tow away the truck and get it out in the neighborhood and off the street. Next is something I've heard about this meeting a lot lately. This is just a very, very small part. Uh, that complete mess uh by the yacht club, that can be seen from the man. Is still not all cleaned up, we've been working on it for two weeks. And. It's a quarter mile walk in, a quarter mile out. Because yacht club. Side is not accessible because of construction by the Navy. On a railroad trestle. So the crew has to park the parking lot and go up over the tracks. To where all this stuff is, bag it up and hike out another quarter mile. To the parking lot and then public works comes by and fixes that. I would note, this is a team effort, so there were people there. And. Some people move along nicely and some do not. So whole ship of police officers went in there, three of them. They had to clear that area for the safety of the work and make sure they were all gone. Then. They could start bringing out the garbage and then public works came by and haul that garbage away, so this is a team effort. To get this done. That's another uh picture of yacht club area. This is an example of what's there. And then a third slide. Some of what was in that same area. And in the same spot after that was removed. Again, if I talk to Miss Ted today. There's still uh war to take out, but with hiking, hike out, some are criminal defendants uh. Can do that physical labor and some cannot. Uh, some are restricted to more light duty, like picking up litter or railroad app. They can't haul all that weight up and over a railroad trestle, I could worry about, don't have liability. Uh, when they're doing that, they're technically a city employee, so. Never had no liability claim, want to keep it that way. Next is a three cent Johnson trail. And this is an example. It's pretty upsetting, uh, work crew cleaned this up. And the very next day, uh, one officer's got a call, I was talking to him about somebody trying to set a camp again on a trail. And so went straight out to take care of it. Uh, next photo is another photo of the trail and the work crew working on things. The next one has uh something to notice, and again, this is an example of the great help from public works, which we greatly appreciate. It could not get this done without them. In the foreground, you kind of see some metal there, they see it looks like a, almost like a heavy burlap loop. There's another one that's in the back. Those are best described as like a helicopter bag. And. So all. The litter and the bags and the garbage and the feces and. Heroin needles and by the way, pill packs for fentanyl. I'll gather that up, my supervisor takes care of the drug park. Putting these huge bags, now this is the steep hillside, so firstly drag them up to here. Put them in these bags, public works have a line down the hillside. And crank this up in those bags. And then use a forklift to put in their trucks. And they say, man, you know what I'm talking about, so, and it's just a huge effort. We're talking about tons. In these projects, not a few pounds. And it takes a lot of work from the scene employees, working with work crew to get this done. And it's another picture of what they found there. And they did clean all up, when they were done, it was all cleaned up. And then I bring towards the end here, I don't want to touch very briefly on safety. Again, to three officers to check out the yacht club to make sure the work crew was safe. They deal with drugs, violence, no illness. We have criminal defendants of critic crimes themselves who are now going out to a camp. Where they might run into people that they know. From the street, right? So we have to make sure they're all gone, uh, can be some friction. And unfortunately, last year, uh, the only injury we had. Was our community service supervisor, Miss Ted. And I I warned her that I'm talking about her. Was shot by an air pistol gun. And she was injured. But it was not a homeless person, I want to point out, it was not somebody on drugs, it was not somebody that we know. It was from a pissed off homeowner. That lived next door to a camp, the crew was cleaning up. And the crew was identified with the clothing they were wearing, they had the blue van out there with the bashing nights, say community service in court. He was drunk, she was angry, I saw the body cam, I saw the trial. And he started shooting at the crew. I like to point out that the criminal defendants protected my employee. They knew what was going on before she did, and they actually protected her, but she got hit. And she was wounded. And the individual was convicted of felony assault of a court worker. And he went to jail. And so we take safety, it's a really big deal, but I really appreciate law enforcement. Next slide here about court safety. Threats against judges and court players increased forty percent since two thousand sixteen. That's not something that's been lost upon us. Working in the court system. This is a number for the whole country, I could not get one for just the state of Washington. Sadly, it's about two thousand seven hundred percent prophetic that since two thousand sixteen. We've got any uh training, confidential training uh here in court regarding active shooter training. We've gotten training from other judges who've been injured, including uh. One of the judges in Thurston County had assets on a space. We had a judge in Texas who gave us a talk, he shot their driver, they're signing their car. Uh, unfortunately, these things are increasing and security is a big deal to us, you know, and they just didn't. And the gentleman next to me as well, in his former role and maybe current role as well. Uh, for somebody bossing on the glass uh that we now have, that is a security measure uh which we greatly appreciate. That was a recommendation of the police department and our security code. Next, our team, guess what, no photos. Remember the last slide, court security? Uh, we're not gonna put our team's photos out there to the public. We got their first names, that's all you get, uh, the answer to the phone, that's all you get. We have, well, about them, I haven't stopped, I haven't followed. It's been a couple of years and so we do avoid having pictures taken. And have our full names known as best possible for our safety. Uh, let's get a little bit happier, okay, so. We saved about five to seven thousand dollars a year on paper. Since two thousand nineteen by computerizing a lot of the court. Our goal this year is for paperless court, and it's a very nice young man in the corner over there that we're counting on. To help us with that goal. And. We're preparing what is called the Odyssey program. So part of my job is to look ahead. Odyssey is a computer program currently used by the superior courts in the state of Washington. There are two courts in Washington using it right now, that's Gig Harbor and City of Tacoma, if I remember correctly. It is a paperless system for a court. It is going to be required, it's not gonna be a choice. The state will pay for that program. But we have to be ready for it, when that program shows up in two thousand twenty-four, it's been delayed a couple of years, but it should be showing up in two thousand twenty-four. I can do nothing. In which case the state's gonna look at us and go like, all new files have to be scanned and put into the system. And by the way, while you're at it, scan all the old ones in the system too and hurry up. Uh, I don't want to be in that position, so we're gonna try to get everything. Into a PDF format. By the end of this year. And we have leased copiers, uh, that are more scanner than copier, once in this room right here, there's another one in the court office. And these three hundred pages at a time, so our goal is to scan every file before the end of the year, if possible. So when Odyssey shows up, uh, the state IT people will work with the city IT person. And transfer those files into Odyssey and then we don't have to worry about catching up, we're already there. And that's a good place to be. Our court rules have been modified over the last few years to encourage electronic filings, so we're ahead on that as well. And all that will save us money. No files, uh, no paper, except what the defendant needs. How the system works, uh, some of the state council may know, like, I practice as an attorney, cause I can't, cause county's paperless. So if I file an attorney, I found no appearance in the court. They take it, they scan it, they hand it back to you. They don't need anymore, they stamp your copy of that, they're done. There's no need to keep paper at all. Another goal for next year is to increase our court security, kind of touched on that, we're looking at grants. Sadly, we're looking at bolted roof glass and probably a scanner or a security officer. Uh, he's still putting hands in purses and we don't want to cut his hand on a needle. Or blade or knife of some kind. And so the scanners are not cheap. So we're hoping that legislation so far is going through for security money and hopefully we'll get that. And that's really kind of my wrap, I want to. Thank the city council for their support over the years, I usually watch you one Tuesday nights, but don't talk to you. And. I appreciate the respect of our independence, I appreciate the fact that you know we do our best to be as efficient as possible. I will keep looking for as many grants as we can uh to get things done. And if you have any questions, feel free to have brought my administrator just in case.
Right, any questions?
I have a couple of comments, I was there for the past couple of weeks on Wednesdays with council member McDowell and we were both in tears. About how beautiful this. About how beautiful this uh, regeneration of these folks. Progress was and that they had to spend a whole year and they had they. They they had to want to do this. They we couldn't just force it upon them. They had to want to do it and they want to be successful and. It just thought we were talking about how, wow, that's the American dream to be event ourselves and. Uh, council member McDowell and I were just very impressed by all the proceedings and how much work and thought and care. That everyone brought into the community and also the the service providers, new directions and consejo and the partnerships we have with the private sector. So the nonprofit sector. So I was just, it's a beautiful program and I was just impressed by all the steps that you're taking and how thoughtful it is and how. Win, 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 win. Every solution you have, every problem you have, you turn it into a solution. Like you really rate, made some really great lemonade on these lemons.
Yeah, and I and I should mention what we're doing. I want to thank uh, consejo was our main contract contractor. They rearranged their schedule to accommodate our people. And their work schedule and that was amazing. And new directions has been wonderful uh, as well. And north says resources as well, uh, the unemployment office. Uh, in both Spanish and English, it helps people find jobs. And it helps some of our people learn how to speak English and second language. And so it's been a creative effort. Youth connect regarding clothing for an interview. Uh, it's it's been great.
It just made me hopeful that we're doing the right things and that we're doing our best with with little resources that we have. So thank you very much.
I um, have it. I shouldn't say enjoy coming in because it's. It's kind of an enjoyment because I see these people coming forward and trying to better their life. Um, their lives and so and something if you can just get to one. And sitting back there and watch the process. They are kind of, they just kind of bloom out into a new, different person. And I appreciate all the work you do.
Well, as I tell the criminal defendants in the program, I'll do the work they do. I just give it an opportunity. They do the work. I don't want it to stay clean sober that night. So though it's on now.
But if.
That choice.
But if you weren't there. Heading up this program.
I'll take comments very well. So I think it's their work.
Thank you and your staff for all your hard words.
And thank you about team speaking.
Right. In terms city manager Mark Ziegler has details for us about a grant secure police partner.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council. I'm pleased to bring to you tonight a grant from the Washington Department of Commerce. Uh, this was funded through the two thousand twenty two supplemental state capital budget with the assistance from our state delegation. And this grant is to um, help provide additional security for our first responders at civic center. The grant would cover the fencing of the parking area just to the east of the civic center here outside police department. And then increase some lighting and some camera, security cameras. So. Uh, beginning of this process um, is here with the contract and the scope of work. Um, that has been approved by Washington State Department of Commerce. Uh, city staff are working on a vacation process to come back through uh. For Fifth Street between Grove and Coda. So that is just next to civic center here. Um, the fence would be installed from the civic center building itself across the sidewalk to the east side of. Coda or excuse me, Fifth Street. Uh, if we're starting back at Grove, down the. Sidewalk or the curb line to um, to near Coda Street where the sign is there, we remain, we. Maintain access to the parking lot off of Coda and Fifth into the civic center. Those would be gated off for um. For vehicles uh, associated with the police department only. And then uh, we would have uh, man gates at the sidewalk itself. So that would be closed off for public access as as well. Um, this is something that the city has been working on for several years here to provide that access. Uh, security, uh, limit the access, I should say, and provide security for our first responders as well as our court, our municipal court employees. Um, if you look at the outside of the building, the doors are recessed. So when you walk out of the door from the inside, you're walking out kind of blind, right? You don't see down the, down the walls of the building. So um. Anybody could be kind of hanging out next to the building, behind one of the cars on the other side of the street and with ill intent. So the the idea here is to limit access to the general public throughout that area. Um, for our, the own safety of the police court and actually Macecom would be included in the side at the backside as well. So. With your approval, we would add this to the action agenda on May second and uh. Get this off to the Department of Commerce and start this project uh, with a construction period sometime this uh, summer.
Donna, do we have any public comment?
No, we don't, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone in the audience want to speak on this issue? Right, do we have a motion?
I moved to place the contract on the May two, twenty twenty three, city council action agenda for further consideration.
Second.
All right, comments or questions?
Pedro.
Uh, as it relates to the vacation process, are there any concerns with our traffic counts in that area? Being nearby the apartments and other things. I know we're already a one way here. So are we anticipating much of an impact to travel in public?
Uh, it's it's not really. Um, it it's a short, it's a short. Trip, you know, if you will, from the apartments, the intersection of Grove. So uh, traffic moving northbound on the short section of Fifth to Grove would turn right. On Grove. And uh, proceed that way whether they're heading north or south at that point. Obviously, it's one way. So that's the only, you know. Effective traffic, we're not affecting traffic from Coda heading southbound on Fifth Street.
When we say secure parking area, we're not talking race wire or barbed wire.
No, good point, good point, council member. Uh, yeah, we're looking at a uh, a wrought iron type fencing. Uh, with appropriate um, with appropriate gates and mechanical infrastructure that would be appropriate for those uses. Uh, so whether that's a loop system or a fob or something that would open the gates in a, in a reasonable amount of time. So. Um, our first responders can get out of that parking area um. Safely and quickly as well as have some overrides. So in case there is a. Breakdown of some sort, exactly right. We can, we can manage that as well.
I assumed that, but I just.
Yes.
Know how far security.
And the sidewalk will stay open on the east side. So next to the new parking lot along um, the portion where the uh, planting is going on now. That's how pedestrians would would uh, transport from Grove to Coda uh, along Fifth Street.
Cool. Any other questions? Right, we have a motion in the second to place contract on the May second, twenty twenty three city council action agenda for the consideration. All in favor, say aye. Post, motion carries. All right, Jay, you get to get up now. Public Works Director Jay Harris has information for us about purchasing equipment for the wastewater treatment plant.
Good evening, uh, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, uh, Council Jay Harris, Public Works Director. Um, I presented last time, uh, main wastewater treatment plant solids handling. Uh, it's ten years old now and um, most of the equipment is by Androids and um. That uh, their warranty is is ending and we have to do maintenance through them. We bring in uh, some of their techs to assist us with things. And then we need to buy parts directly from them because they have a proprietary system uh, for solids, uh, de-watering, drying, conveyance, that sort of thing. And uh, there's been no changes to the resolution since last meeting.
Right, Donna, do we have any public comment?
No, we don't.
All right, anyone in the audience want to speak on this? All right, may have a reading of resolution number one, two, six, nine, dash, zero, three, two, three.
Resolution number one, two, six, nine, dash, zero, three, two, three. A resolution of the city of Shelton, Washington, declaring the purchase of Android. De-watering and writing equipment, parts and service. To be clearly and legitimately limited to the full court.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
Move to uh, approve resolution number one, two, six, nine, dash, zero, three, two, three as presented.
Second.
Comments or questions? We have a motion to second to adopt resolution number one, two, six, nine, dash, zero, three, two, three as presented. All in favor, say aye. Post, motion carries. All right, interim city manager Mark Ziegler has details for us about a purchase and sale agreement.
Thank you again, Mayor. Again, uh, following up on our briefing of April fourth, this is a purchase sale agreement. With uh, Mason Health, uh, Mason Public Hospital, Mason County Public Hospital District number one. Uh, for property located just off thirteen street uh, adjacent to the hospital campus. Uh, this property was declared surplus previously by the council in two thousand twenty one. And deemed of no longer uh, useful uh, purpose to the city of Shelton. Uh, and this will be utilized for critical hospital infrastructure in the future. So. Uh, nothing has changed uh, since the briefing and the sales agreement or the resolution.
Thank you, Mark. Donna, anyone sign up for public comment?
No, we don't.
Anybody want to speak on this? We can wait. We're not there yet.
Okay.
Or was I? Oh, they have a reading of the resolution number one, two, seven, zero, dash, zero, three, two, three.
Resolution number one, two, seven, zero, dash, zero, three, two, three. A resolution of the council of the city of Shelton, Washington. Authorizing the city manager to kind of perfectly pay the agreement. So parcel numbers three, two, zero, one, eight, dash, two, five, dash, zero, dash, six, zero, one, two, zero. And three, two, zero, one, eight, dash, two, four, dash, six, zero, zero, six, zero. Republic Hospital District number one of Mason County.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve resolution number one, two, seven, zero, dash, zero, three, two, three as presented.
Second.
All right, comments or questions?
Yes, uh, I just wanted to note that exhibit A and exhibit B gives the city. Our grantees the right to make sure that we do this environmentally soundly and also that we create a tra- a trail with the buffer zone. So that any development that does go on along there will be environmentally sound and and increase the the niceness of the neighborhood. And not just the the facilities of the of the hospital. So it's a win-win again. And thank you for um. Community chance to speak, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Any more comments or questions? All right. We have a motion to second to adopt resolution number one, two, seven, zero, dash, zero, three, two, three as presented. All in favor, say aye. Post, motion carries. All right, Mark, will you give us the manager?
Absolutely, thank you, Mayor.
Or do you have one?
Yeah, I've got a few items to cover tonight. Uh, I wanted to um. Bring to your attention again, the empty bowls event that started last Wednesday. Uh, it's a very busy event. A lot of people having fun here in the civic center and. Making creations out of clay, um, various. Uh, let's say. Abilities and levels. So, but everybody had fun. The next event is tomorrow night. Uh, and with the culminating event a week from Wednesday here in the civic center. So with uh, our arts commission, a volunteer organization putting in a lot of. The work and effort to make this uh, a reality uh, for now the nineteenth year. Uh, this Saturday, uh, the work party for the pollinator garden next door is taking place. Uh, so the Mason Conservation District with help from Scoop and Motory uh, will have boots in the ground. Hopefully it's dry for them. Uh, to plant everything in that pollinator garden. Uh, if you've gone by there, I think you'll see that um, it's being transformed. Uh, so there'll be some walking paths with gravel, uh, raised beds, uh, some planting boxes and it'll be a variety of. Plants and vegetation that will attract uh, pollinators of bees and butterflies and things like that when it fills in. I think it'll be a nice amenity for um, downtown and uh, this this neighborhood. Uh, again, happening Saturday, the Olympus Rally uh, Car Show down on railroad. So we'll have a closure on railroad from sixth to. First Street, uh, I believe from seven AM, it looks like noon. I think the event wraps up about eleven AM. But by the time things get cleared out, it'll probably be about noon before uh, things are open back up. So we're happy to have Olympus Rally back in town again and. Their events throughout the weekend. Uh, and then uh, I can't stress enough um, the Spotlight Shelton event. Uh, next Tuesday, the twenty fifth, six PM here in the civic center. Uh, it's our opportunity to uh, inform and educate the public on the council manager form of government operations here within the city. And we've kind of staged this prior to the upcoming filing period. Uh, for council seats, but it's also a great opportunity just for anybody that's interested uh, to come in and find out more about how. Uh, the city is governed. And how our city uh, departments operate. Um, so we'll be giving fairly short presentations throughout uh, those. Those subject matters and then we'll have a question and answer session to be able to um, be able to inform people as much as we can that evening. So. Uh, looking, really looking forward to that. And the last thing on my list tonight is um, the unfortunate events over the weekend. Um, and obviously, uh, as everybody knows, had a few uh. Gun violence events that took place in town, um, and unfortunate occurrence of a homicide. The investigations at this point are are showing that these are targeted events. They're not random events that subjects knew each other. Um, there's not a necessarily a um. Uh, cause to be of concern for the general public at this point. Uh, certainly, we want to make as. Take as many precautions as we can and police are working on on these matters uh, day and night. Uh, we appreciate the assistance from uh, Mason County Sheriff's Office and Washington State Patrol. Uh, throughout the weekend and continuing to do these matters and the police force working as hard as they can to um, certainly identify. The uh, culprits um, of the homicide as quickly as they can. So. Um, we'll have more information when it becomes available.
Pass on my my thanks and support for the cooperative uh, work that night. I had the opportunity to kind of listen to the apprehension process for the couple individuals up off of Fairmont. Uh, listening to the coordination between state patrol aircraft with their thermal camera guiding in the K nines. And and it was a cooperative effort between sheriff's office, PD, so I believe tribal police were also involved and. And state patrol and we all integrated um, immediately and apprehended individuals that were involved and. And uh, when, you know, went on to there, but it was quite a, quite an ordeal, but it was uh, humbling to hear. How, how well our uh, department uh, created uh, amongst others and appreciative of their efforts and.
It's certainly taxing for a small department like Cheltenham PD. So it's it's critical that we have these partnerships with. Little law enforcement agencies to assist in these instances.
Thank you. Any comments or questions first?
Well, I'm excited about the pollinate, pollinating garden here. That they come over to my house and they just down the block a little ways. But uh, that's looking with the parking lot, basketball court, now pollinating garden. That's really cool over there. That's a good project. Put some freshness in Shelton.
Yeah.
And Sheldon Farmers Market is going to be there on Saturday, starting May.
That's it, yeah, home of the Sheldon Farmers Market. So great to host them down here.
All right, any more comments, questions for? Nope, all right. At this time, we're. Members of the public are invited to make public comment on any topic that we have not talked about tonight. Donna, do you, anyone sign up for public comment?
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. I'm happy to see you all. Um, appreciating your new fancy technology over there. Although I was. Sharing with my my seatmates over here, I was appreciating the fuzziness from before, so I didn't have to see myself on the camera so much, but. Um, anyhow, I wanted to share with you that um, our recovery cafe is up and running well. Um, since we opened our doors on February first. We have had a little over eighty unduplicated participants. Um, these are people who are dedicated to sobriety. Who are dedicated to participating in rec- and weekly, excuse me, recovery circles. And people who are committed to giving back to their community. And so it's exciting to see that number of participants. Um, we have a variety of different classes, ranging from self-help classes and life skills classes, unlocking your potential is one of. One of which that we have uh, to Zumba classes and uh, recovery groups. And we've partnered with. Uh, a variety of our twelve step programs and NA programs here in town. Um, I'd be interested in meeting with Judge Greer about maybe some ways that we can get together and offer opportunities. Um, for people who are participating in treatment court and stuff like that to um, connect with us. Uh, that would be fantastic. I just, so that is going well and I I invite each of you, if you have the time, I know you're all very busy. To pop in sometime. We're open Mondays, Wednesdays and Fridays from ten to six right now. Um, but if you're ever just, you know, over your lunch hour, one of those days, just want to pop in and and see how things are going, we'd love to have you. Uh, if it is a Zumba day, I will make you do it. So where could choose? Um, and outside of that, I wanted to also let you know that um, Community Lifeline is. Also working very hard to maintain our thirty-five bed capacity. We. Are at capacity most nights. Luckily, we have been able to kind of transition some people, whether into. Treatment centers or other housing opportunities. And so sometimes you'll see a small fluctuation. It'll go from thirty-five to thirty or thirty-five to thirty-two and, and then we quickly fill those beds back up. Another way that I, that I. Was imagining working with Judge Greer as he visits some of those homeless encampments he showed us photos of is, is that perhaps one of our staff members can attend. That particular day and, and try to make connections with those people that are living in those encampments and hopefully bring them. Off of the streets and into shelter. Perhaps that would be a good way to partner. But another issue that I just wanted to briefly mention, because I'm running out of time, is that. I appreciate all of you and I know that there are still a lot of issues that are. President and our, and our pressing in our community. But I know that we're all working together to find a solution to those. So I appreciate each of you. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is George Bush. I've recently learned that there's some whole lot more issues going on at the pound that I previously thought of. I don't know if you guys are aware of it, but I would absolutely love to help. And I know Jim, you wanted to help too. You know, if there's anything that I can do to help that move forward, I would love to. On another note, just something I wanted to bring up. I grew up New York City in a, with a household with a Hispanic mother. And when Sharon brought up the idea recently about getting involved community-wise with how to get things done, it made a lot of sense to me. So I remember when they called my mom, told my mom that I'd done something stupid, that there was hell to pay for. So a lot of times that we have out here in our streets is you have kids that are running around, spray painting stuff and that sort of thing. You know, a lot of times you get them on camera and whatnot, but nobody, you know, brings it to their parents and says, hey, look, check this out. So recently, I'm a member of one of the local housing organizations here. And it was brought to my attention that a couple of young kids had broken into one of our apartments. And repainted everything. It was a brand new, just redone apartment. Repainted everything with caulk. And paint and everything else and on the carpets and all that good stuff. So, you know, needless to say, we weren't very happy about it. So then we went back and looked at the cameras and found out that, hey, it was a couple of our tenants. So it became a lot easier at that point to call out mom and dad and bring them into the office and go, hey. You know, we have two options here. You know, we can go with a police route and you can, you know, happily go off there and you can be in your life as, as a criminal. Or you have the other option where we can have you go in there and clean up the mess that you guys made. Work with our, you know, our staff and whatnot. We'll give you the equipment that you need to get it done and write an apology letter for what you did. You know what happened? The moms went home and they told those kids, you better get your butts together because you're going to clean some stuff today and you better write those letters and get them done. They went back, they cleaned up, they wrote the letters. And you know what? I haven't noticed those kids doing any more graffiti or any kind of things like that anymore. So the idea behind maybe having the police when they, when you have a video like that out there that we've seen recently on Facebook, especially if they're like Mountain View. All the graffiti and one of those going on, you can go to those people's parents and say, hey, look. We know this is your kid. You know, do you want to go the court route or do you want to have your kid come out here and clean up the mess? I think we could get a lot more done and accomplished by that and not have to tie it, of course. Judge Greer, they do a great job with that community service guy. They spent a lot of time cleaning it up over there on Fourth on the side of my building because we have some. Repeat offenders that like to come there and make a mess. But I think, you know, encouraging people to work together within the community can do a whole lot more. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dean Jewitt.
Good evening. I've got about nine minutes worth of stuff to cover in three minutes. Hi. I'm not sure if you're aware, but the city of Phoenix, Arizona, Phoenix was, was sued. We had a conversation about that. A trial judge, a trial judge in Phoenix issued a ruling Monday rejecting the city's efforts to throw out a lawsuit, lawsuit challenging the legality. Of the city's action in maintaining the zone, the homeless encampment in the city's downtown that has become one of the largest concentrations of homeless people in the United States. I am going to have to paraphrase this a little bit. So. The judge threw it out because the city didn't, you know, the city was trying to get them to throw it out. The judge denied that. They let it go to court. The businesses and the citizens won. Okay, that sets a precedence. Okay, I just want to make sure that we're all a hundred percent aware of this. And I would like Mark, Eric. Sharon, Deidre, look it up. Okay. You know what they sued for? They didn't sue for financial gains. They sued to make sure that the city was doing what was already on the books. Ordinance and RCWs and laws that were already passed to protect the business owners. It's, it's that whole, you know, devaluation of your business, the damage of property, had George talks about a repeat offender. There are several businesses around this community that have. Standing no trespassing work orders and they are not dealt with in a proactive manner. Why should a maintenance man or myself have to call in? If an officer or our chief of police, police can direct. The officers to do what needs to be done to protect our community and the citizens that are in it to generate your tax revenue. If you're down on your revenue, don't you want more businesses here? How do you get more businesses here if you have an unscrupulous character? You know, running around town causing problems. You know, I applaud Athena's program with its self-help. You know what? People have to feel a value and feel worthy and worth something to bring themselves out of that Quagmire. So kudos. Okay, but there's a lot of other people that are coming from other areas that are causing chaos in our community. And I feel that there's a lack of leadership that's been going on for quite a while, which then basically it gets out into the community, gets out into the state and people come here. Okay, take a look at Aberdeen and Hoquim. Why does Aberdeen have a homeless problem and Hoquim doesn't? Why does Hobby Lobby have, you know, two hundred and twenty-seven tents and all of Target shopping carts? But the Lacy side of the freeway doesn't. We're both in Washington. It's how you all handle the laws. And direct the police to work with the state agencies.
Is Jackie Jewitt? No, thank you. And we have one person comes in, we have Colleen Carmichael.
Good evening. Tonight I want to speak a little bit more about drug addiction. In an article published this month, the director of the National Institute of Drug Abuse, Dr. Nora Volkow. Talks about how addiction involves brain circuitry and not lack of will from the addict. Recent discoveries and innovations are pointing to possibilities for directly intervening with the brain circuitry involved in addiction. A year ago, a multinational team published a landmark analysis of people who smoked cigarettes. This study helped delineate key nodes in the brain associated with remission from nicotine addiction. A reduced risk of alcohol addiction. Technologies known as neuromodulization enable us to help alter activity in these and other brain areas without harming the brain. Transcranial magnetic stimulation, TMS, is already FDA-approved for the treatment of major depression. And cleared for obsessive compulsive disorder and smoking cessation. TMS cannot reach some areas that are implicated in addiction disorders. But another method called deep brain stimulation, DBS, can. Clinical trials using DBS are ongoing to treat addiction to opioids, alcohol, or meth. Closed-loop brain machine interfaces have been used with DBS to treat Parkinson's. A model for using such an approach was used to help people with eating disorders. And their participants experienced improved self-control and weight loss. Another recent advance in neuromodulization is a method that uses low-intensity focused ultrasound. That can target areas deep inside the brain and is non-invasive. Trials are being conducted to treat people with opioid use disorder. Ultrasound treatment could potentially open a whole new terrain of addiction management. One that it could even involve wearing devices to deliver needed interventions in real time. New technologies provide great hope for the millions of people who struggle with addiction in America and worldwide. If we want to help people with addiction, shaming them is not proven or effective for, for treatment. Improving access to technology for healthcare providers and increasing access to evidence-based treatments for those struggling with addiction is. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak tonight on general public comment? All right. Does council have any new items for discussion tonight? All right. Our next meeting is Tuesday, May second at six PM. We also have a Spotlight Shelton Tuesday, twenty-fifth. At six PM and this meeting is adjourned at seven twenty PM.